To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First item agenda is the approval of minutes for the meeting of March 13th. Does anybody have any corrections or changes?
I had some corrections that basically are typos, I think, from the computer program, and Glenn is changing them.
Okay. Anybody else have any?
No. I make a motion to accept them as amended.
Okay.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item of business is a public hearing for Stonecrop Gardens Incorporated, 81 Stonecrop Lane. It's an applicant seeks to reconstruct a building, parking, and realignment, et cetera. Variance is required because under Town Zoning Code 17536C, the maximum permitted building height of structures in the ridgeline protection overlay district is 30 feet. And the proposed replacement structure includes a capel arising to a height of 37 feet. So, I think we went over the application last meeting, and the application was complete. But I guess, Mr. Watson, you're handling this, you want to just run over this again?
Yes, thank you. Glennon Watson from Beatty &amp; Watson, I'm here with Tim Rassik, who is the project architect, and people from Stonecrop.
He's hidden behind the sign.
Yeah, he's hidden behind the sign. And behind Mr. Rassik is Alexis Frye, who's on staff at Stonecrop, and Caroline Burgess, who is the executive director at Stonecrop, and Anne Cabot, who, and I think switched places on me, at least my head switched places, Anne Cabot, and in the middle, who is one of the benefactors and founders of Stonecrop. There was a building that was destroyed by fire, or partially destroyed by fire, and they saw the opportunity to take it down and rebuild the building. Stonecrop Gardens, as you probably all know, is a public garden, it was established by the Cabots, and it is on a 67-acre parcel, which is outlined in red on this graphic that I have before you. The spire on the proposed building is in the middle of the circle, and as you can see, the middle of the circle is in pretty much the middle of the property. The property has two special use permits, one for Stonecrop Gardens and the other for the Therapeutic Equestrian Center, which has changed its name recently, but I don't know what that new name is. In the middle of the building, there is a proposed spire that's going to, that is going to be, hopefully, if you grant the variance, will be built seven feet above the maximum height.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's in that drawing there.
That's in that drawing there. And just to give you a little more idea of what's going on, again, 67 acres, Therapeutic Equestrian Center up towards the north end of the property, and the center of the property houses the Stonecrop Gardens, public garden, it's a teaching garden, and it's gained some fame, and well-known in horticultural circles. So, I'm going to take this board down and place it over there if you want to look at it again, and this was one of the inserts in the package that you got last month, and show you a closer view. We have approximately the same orientation. The project that's going on, which is, the major part of the project is to realign the parking and enlarge the parking within the garden so that they have, so that the public that's coming to see, to see the garden is, has a better access to the site. We're adding handicap spaces, and this is the proposed building. It does occupy the same ground, it's a little bit larger, but it occupies the same ground as the building that was removed. And this square that you see that I'm pointing to in the, in the crotch of that L-shaped building is, is the tower. Now, because we're on a ridgeline, we have to, our height limit is reduced from the 40 feet normally associated with, with a building, and most of the zoning has, provides for a 40-foot building, it reduces it to 30 feet. The idea is to minimize the visibility of the, of the building above the ridgeline, so people walking, hiking from, in public places, their view of the forest will not This third graphic is Mr. Rassik's elevation of, of the building, and to which we have added some numbers that, and again, you have a, this graphic is reproduced in the back of your, your package. What, what we're seeking is to have eight, that's actually seven feet of, of the building at any point where somebody might see it, they will see. The point of this roof, it'll be about eight feet across and about eight, seven feet high. So, seven, and if you take that eight feet across, four times seven is 28, half that, if you do the triangle math, you'll get 28 square feet. If you look in, if, as you went through the, the questions, your standard questions that we answered, you'll see we have, surrounded by, by, by public property, a lot of it owned by the state, Glenwood, but there's not, it's not a very visible spot. There is one ridgeline off towards Route 9, a little to the northwest, about 3,000 feet away. So, there's a potential for somebody to walk up there, through the woods, and look down and see this 28 square feet. It's going to be very small, is about the point I'm trying to make, at 3,000. Right now, you're, you're looking, and what you see shaded here is the area that, that sticks above that, and it might in fact not be that visible, because it will be backed by trees. I wanted to go, take just a couple of moments to talk about some of the reasoning here, and Mr. Rassik will really add substantially to this, to my comments here, because our, our feeling in this regard is we have a community of houses that are very similar, and that there's a style of structure up there that's been, that's been built, and it's been maintained, and it's been, and it's been continued, and to not have this tower or this spire would really be, it would be harmful to the architecture and the, and the aesthetic of the place. And that's, let me get my hands on the right spot here. So, we, normally, your, your criteria, I think, at least in my experience, is you're most often dealing with percentages, and how near to a property line or near to a, or a proposed facility is going to be, or an existing facility is going to be. We're not really dealing with nearness, we're dealing, we're dealing with a different issue, we're dealing with visibility, and it's distant visibility, and our impact on that, we, we say is, is very small. I don't think there's a place where you can see it that's less than 3,000 feet away. In terms of the percentage, we're talking, for the height percentage, it is a 23% height variance, with seven over 30.
Glenn, you chose this style just for the aesthetics?
Well, I'll let, I, I think, Mr. Rassik, it's better to, to, to speak to that, so if you just let, I'll wrap this up, my part of it up, and I'll ask him to talk to you, but you do have some samples in the back of the book.
Can I just ask you, what material is on the spire?
Well, why don't we bring Mr. Rassik up, because he's, he's the architect, and he can tell you exactly.
Mm-hmm.
I guess what we're looking at here is, it looks like the shaded area is the area you're looking for the variance, okay?
Exactly.
And we're just trying to figure out, I guess, one question would be, why couldn't it end at the non-shaded area? Roof line.
My name is Tim Rassik from Yonkers Architects, we're the architects for the building. So, the material on the roof is, is a metal, it's this color, it's brown, it's meant to blend into the, into the existing plantings.
Is it in, in like, lines?
It's a standing seam metal roof, yes.
Yeah, and it's, it looks like there are, you know, lines of D mark.
There are little ribs that come down.
Yeah.
It's a fairly, it's a standing seam.
Yeah, so it's not unattractive.
No, I think it's, it's meant to be attractive, of course, we want to be in keeping with the gardens and the buildings, and as Glenn had alluded to, the, it's, it's meant to relate to the architectural vocabulary on the site, and it has become a site of note. The original manor house was constructed in the late 1950s, and was based on a book, an architecture firm in 1921 had traveled through France, the French countryside, and documented old farmhouse and manor houses. And the original manor house was actually designed by a drafts person from that firm. And the tower element is an element that is repeated on the site, it's seen in a potting shed and various other structures, so the, the concept is that that element should carry through the rest of the other buildings on the site. The, the building that was here previously was really almost a residential structure, so it looked more like a house, and wasn't in keeping with the other buildings on the property, so we're taking this opportunity to have a more cohesive vocabulary.
You'll see, if you look at the samples in the back of the book, they're all, well, there's, there's a section beyond this book, but before that, there are samples of the buildings on the site, and you'll see they all had this tower. It was started in the 50s, and it continues even through the Conservatory Building, which was built in the 90s, I think, or late 80s, certainly in the.
90s?
Yeah.
So, it's, it's an aesthetic that is important to the garden and the whole idea of the garden, and we would very much like to keep it.
Okay. I'm trying aesthetically to stay with the other, compared to the other buildings.
Yes.
Or stay in line with the other buildings, is what you're trying to do here.
Exactly.
All right, Glenn, I just want to go over these five factors with you a little bit. I don't want to, I don't know, you've got, you always give me detailed answers to the, to the questions, you know, which I appreciate, but I guess with the, you know, we're going to look at number one, it says, what possible detriment would the variance have on nearby properties? You don't have to read the whole thing, I guess, basically.
Just to speak to it, the.
Excuse me, Glenn?
This is a habitual problem. The, the, the impact, if it's going to occur, is going to be the visibility of that being offensive to someone's eye that's not on the site. It's not, not, not offensive to somebody on the site, it's somebody off the site looking from a distance. So, there's certainly an idea that you could build a massive structure, a big structure, and it would poke its way through the canopy and be, make what otherwise a perfectly bucolic setting really ugly. Classic example, cell phone towers. I mean, people come out, this is not a cell phone tower. So, that is mitigated, that is mitigated, I think, significantly, because there are really no place where you can see it that's anywhere near, and it's small. So, it will be, its impact, if there's any, is going to be minor, and it's going to be very infrequent, because there is no frequently visited spot where you can take a look down and see it.
Okay. Let's see, if you didn't get the variance, how else would you build, how would you accomplish the goal, if you didn't get the variance?
Well, we can't accomplish that particular goal, it's not, just not possible unless you made this whole thing shrink down in miniature, and then you'd be architectural problems. We could accomplish the building, but the building would be not in keeping with the architecture.
Okay. What is the code requirement you seek to vary, or that's basically, we're looking for the?
Yeah, the code requires, as I stated before, 30 feet, a maximum allows 30 feet, and we're seeking to, a variance to have 37.
176.
Yeah. Yeah, 176, yeah, that's a code requirement. What impact effect would the variance have on the current physical and environmental conditions in the area?
Again, we don't think there'll be any physical or environmental conditions affected by this. I think that if, again, I pointed out that this is really, to measure an impact from off-site, I think it will have no impact, because I think there'll be very, very little opportunity, if any, to really see it. But I have to, at this point, take the opportunity to say that it will have a very good impact on the site, because it will, it will be a continuum of the architectural aesthetic of the site, and it will avoid something that's going to be different and contrasting and not aesthetically pleasing within the realm of the architecture that is presented already.
Is variance requested a result of a self-created hardship?
Well, I will read that, if you don't mind. Okay. Whether the variance is self-created or not can be argued either way. The fact that Stonecrop wants the variance and could compromise its goals by designing a building without the need for a variance could be seen as requesting the introduction of a self-created hardship. However, Mr. and Mrs. Cabot spent 49 years developing their property in a specific, harmonious architectural style, and that tradition has been perpetuated by Stonecrop Gardens. The need to ask for the variance, and arguably, was created by the adoption of the new zoning law in 2011.
Okay. That's, that's argued, that's a good argument.
Thank you.
That's good. Are there any questions, anybody else on the board, from the architect?
Glenn, what do you mean by realignment of the parking lot?
Well, I can.
Well, we're not, we're not.
Well, the parking.
That's not a variance for us, I don't think, yeah, right. Yeah, I don't think that's, you don't need a variance for that. That's with the planning board, right? You're working with that?
It's before the planning board, the planning board has scheduled a public hearing for next month.
Right.
Today, the parking lot, you, if you're looking at this graphic that I have up, you come into the parking lot from the bottom of the map, and you come into this first open area is really the parking lot. It's not big enough, and it doesn't provide the circulation, and it doesn't provide orderly parking. So, what we have, what we have done is designed a parking lot that creates a circulation where people can get in and out. We've taken, we've done extensive surveys on the property, and extensive walk, walking and picking out places, and tucked the parking in between trees, and taking advantage of little, little advantage, of, of little open areas where we don't have to cut as many trees, we've minimized the trees that we have to cut down. We don't have sufficient handicap parking, so we've set aside handicap parking close to the building, and at the behest of the planning board, we have actually moved some of the parking closer to the new building. I, I've always been very pleased by looking at the parking lot that Bosque Bell created as it composed to the, when you get at a, at a shopping center or something like that, and if you look at how that works, where it's kind of hidden, and it's in, kind of in the middle of a little bit of a garden, and, and we've tried to, we've tried to create that same sort of an idea, and I think ours will be actually a little more interesting, and it'll be a little less regular, and a little more broken up, but it will supply the circulation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, anybody else who has on the board, any questions? Is anybody from the audience wish to speak on the decision? No? Okay. At this point in time, I'd make a request that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Having reviewed it, and the application, having gone over the five factors and like that, this time, I'm going to call for a vote. Roll call vote, Mr.?
I'll vote to approve.
Approve, Mr.?
I'll vote to approve.
Approve.
I'll vote to approve.
Approve.
I also vote to approve.
I vote to approve. Unanimous. Okay, thank you. All right, next order of business is, new business is Grasso Industrial Design, it's 1602 Route 9 Garrison.
Right.
All right. The applicant seeks an area variance for maximum impervious coverage, Code 17511B, dimension table HC District. The code specifies a maximum of 60% impervious coverage, and the applicant is seeking 69%. I guess what I looked at, I read, I looked at your plans, and I guess you're looking for it to do in addition to your building.
Yes. My, my name is Andre Grasso, I'm the owner of the building, and of the two businesses that occupy the building. And I am looking to gain the variance, so I can get approvals on a approximately 3,800 square foot addition behind the existing building that's on Route 9, as you could see illustrated in the packet that I prepared. I say 3,800 because we've, we've been investigating a basement, and it may or may not have the basement, depending on excavation cost and things like that.
Right.
But above grade, it'll be 30, two stories, 3,800. Less than probably a half acre of disturbance. The area behind the building is kind of an open space now, gravel kind of area that's open, anyway. I also own the, the building to the south, which is a residential property, and then the Garrison Firehouse is to my north.
Right. So, this is in addition to your building, right? And you used this because of what?
Just expansion for storage space. It's primarily going to be used for storage and kind of warehouse and garage. We're, we're product designers, and sometimes we work on large things, and our shop could use a little more space, primarily for, you know, safety reasons also, you know, you're going to have to move this to do that, and it's that kind of.
You're before the planning board with this, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And they, they came out for a site visit, and because we, you know, we ran into the lot coverage issue, they sent me to you guys.
Okay. So, if you don't get the, you know, you gotta, you gotta get this variance to go back to them, I guess, right?
Yes.
Otherwise, you can't, you can't continue with them, okay?
Yeah.
Could you cut the building down to conform to the 60%?
It would be, it would be significantly, you know, reduced down. We look, it would, it would drop it to the point where I'd start, you know, questioning, is it worth, you know?
Whether it's worth it.
Whether it's worth doing it for that much space.
Give me a difference in square footage between if you dropped it down to the code and what you presently want?
We'd probably lose a good 1,500 square feet, I would say.
Some more than half?
Yeah.
It's two stories.
Right. I mean, we even looked at a, you know, we looked at going up, but frankly, it doesn't really, you know, you know, we're, we're designers, and, you know, we spent a lot of time developing our building years ago, you know, it's kind of a nice building, and kind of have this story sticking above it in the back, and.
Right, right. No, I, I know the building, I looked at the building, so you're looking, you're trying to keep in line with the building line, pretty much.
Yeah, right now, I'm keeping the roof lines, you know, the same, so it's, it's really not visible from the front, barely from the, coming north, and a little bit from the south, if you travel south. But, you know, we set it back quite a bit, you know, with, there's a bit of an overhang if you look at the illustrations, and that really makes a difference as you're coming south, you don't see a lot of the building, you know, the addition on it.
Right, right. I reviewed the application, you got any, any questions on the application, or what's, anything that's missing from the application? I mean, we'd have to go to a public hearing on it, you know, I'm trying to say.
So, we're just, is this review for completeness, or?
It's just review for completeness, that's all this is. Got to set up a public hearing. Does anybody feel they need any more information on this? Any more information on this? All right, this time, I make a motion that the application is complete.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we've got to set up a public hearing. Problem with the public hearing, not problem, but we had to change this hearing, this meeting to the end of the month, okay? Usually, we meet the second Monday. Okay. Now, if we were to do that, again, meet next Monday, there wouldn't be enough time to send out the.
So, second, two weeks?
Next Monday is the first Monday.
Actually, more than two weeks.
No. The next, the next meeting would be May 8th.
That's the second Monday?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And it wouldn't, right? Am I correct? I don't have the calendar in front of me, I believe, like, May 8th.
It would be the second.
Second, right, that would be the normal meeting. I don't believe that that's enough time to send out the notices.
It's not, because we missed the, we missed the deadline to have it put in next week's paper.
So, it has to be, what happened, has to happen, all the, listed, all the neighbors and all the surrounding properties have to be notified, it has to go into a newspaper, it has to be in Portland County News, and they advertise it, and then people have that chance, so that's not enough time, okay? So, we could do several things, we could, we could have the meeting in June, is that going to push you off, or?
Waste a lot of time on that.
Or we could make another, another Monday, try and make another Monday in.
We could do the next Monday, which is the 15th.
15th? Anybody have a problem with that, on the 15th?
Is it possible to do the fourth?
The what?
The fourth Monday?
The fourth Monday?
May 22.
Okay.
It might be court.
I see, I don't know about court, see, I don't, the only, I don't know what's going to be in here that night, yeah.
There is court, there is a possibility it could rumble.
No.
It doesn't usually, but it could.
No, thanks.
Oh, there's a possibility this court is going to be here, so we wouldn't be able to use it, we wouldn't be able to use it.
I mean, they, they're usually over by 7:00, but there's never a guarantee.
Yeah, I know, but I think a couple of bad guys were in trouble, you know. The 15th, you can't make?
We could, I mean, I, I'm certain.
Could you get some of the other offices to cover?
Yeah, I mean, I could get someone else, I'm spoken for normally in the third.
I think we've got a better shot on the 15th, okay? So, we'll make it for, the next meeting is going to be May, May 15th, okay?
For the public hearing.
Yeah, for a public, for a public hearing. This will give people time to be notified and everything else like that. Okay. Now, have you had any issues with any neighbors, or anything about this, anybody? No, it's not really too many neighbors around, right? Or the commercial zone, the fire, firehouse next door, and all like that.
Josh, the tree guys are across the street.
Okay, so May 15th is good for everybody, for the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. All right, thank you very much, I'll see you then. Okay.
What time is that?
7:30. And it's right here, same place, same time, same place. We'll be here. Okay, thank you. And we're done with that, and all business. Adam, we had, last meeting, we had a woman come before us with, from Nelsonville, she had a piece of property that was, the town line ran through her piece of property, and there was a big discussion about whether she needed approval from Nelsonville or Phillips Town or whatever, and we went back and forth with it. The building that was respected was here from Nelsonville, he said she didn't, he would approve it. He said he would approve it.
He would approve it.
Yeah, but then the mayor was here, the guy who's going to be elected mayor, who was elected mayor, he said he's not going to approve it, so we went back and forth. Now, I got, I have a letter here that is put on for the agenda, because they say legally they don't need Nelsonville's permission. So, I guess what I would like you to do is give him that, review this, okay, the reason for, I don't know why they don't need Nelsonville's approval.
Maybe because of.
Okay. It's just to you, one of the, it says you, so you must have a copy of it.
Actually, no.
No, we have a copy of it now.
Now I do.
Okay. Now, just review it.
Oh, this is new?
Yeah, we just got it. It's just, I guess they came in the other day, and it was too late to be put on the agenda, but what I want you to do is, if you get a chance, is review it, and see if there's even supposed to go on the agenda. I mean, because you went through this for, you know, quite lengthy period of time, and I was on the understanding that it's had to go through through Nelsonville first. What it basically is, that the house is on a piece of property, the line runs, the town line runs right through the middle, and she wants to build, so the mayor says they have, he had some kind of concerns with it and whatnot, and all like that, that they had to be addressed, and I don't see that as being addressed. So, I don't know if they're going to waste their time. I'm not going to approve it until I know that Nelsonville is okay with this, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. I'll. Okay, I'll, I haven't seen his materials.
Yeah, and when you get a chance, just look at it, let me know. Because then, if, I'd rather not, if you say that, you know, my opinion is Nelsonville has to approve something. This is nothing to me. This is a letter that says they don't, from her, saying that they don't need it. And I'm not, you know, I guess basically, it's from, it's from Beatty &amp; Watson.
There's apparently a conflict between the mayor and the code enforcement officer for Nelsonville.
Correct. They didn't seem to be on the same page.
But the code enforcement officer said it was okay.
Okay. And the mayor said it wasn't okay. So, I don't know where that's at. I really don't want to get involved in it, but, you know, I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to have this woman come here and then have to go through all this again, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Okay? Thank you. Any other business? All business? No business? Anybody got any business? Like a motion?
Second.
Adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.